We're going to call now Bishop Chester L. Thompson, Jr., pastor of the Zion Hill Baptist Church, 117 Mall Road here in our city of Camden, to lead us in our indication.
Let us bow heads in prayer. Oh gracious Father, we are thankful to you for your many manifold blessings that you have sent our way as a city. We thank and praise you God for where we are right now and the great things that you have allowed the leaders of this city to do to bring us to this place. Now Father, as they meet tonight to discuss the business of the church, we pray Father that the agenda will go smoothly and that it will be fruitful. We pray that each and every representative of the different sections of this city, keep in mind, the highest priority that we have is to be considerate of the people that we serve. Father, we pray for each and every person who is involved in the background of city work, the workers, those who work in different capacities. We pray that the blessing of God will be upon them, the joy of the Lord will be their strength. Father, we ask all of these things in the mighty name of Jesus. Thank God. Amen.
Will you please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, you made me see it. And this time we will have our roll call by our city clerk.
Argid.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Simmons. Askew.
Here.
Bell. Lindsay.
Here.
And Mayor what?
Here. If there are no objections, we will entertain a motion if it will be made for the minutes of special call meeting, I'm sorry, December 2nd and regular meeting December 10th of 2019.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the special call meeting and the regular meeting of December.
Motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Those in favor use the voting sign of yea.
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 Those opposed use the voting sign of nay. Yea is happy. At this time, we will entertain a motion of acceptance for our financial report of December 2019.
That's a good one.
Second.
We move and second, I'm ready for discussion. Those in favor use the voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Yea. Those who oppose use the voting sign of nay. Nay is happy again. At this time, we're going to prepare for audience participation. And as you come to the podium for this time, please state your name, state your address for the record, and please keep your comments to five minutes or less.
My name is Rochelle Williams, ours audit 212 Tucker Avenue. First of all, I would like to take the opportunity to invite all of you to attend the Martin Luther King Parade that is being sponsored by Impact Camden on this Saturday. The parade will begin at two o'clock at the Business Incubator and end at Zion Hill Baptist Church. Hope you can all come out and support or participate. If you'd like to participate, we will have registration forms after the meeting. Also, the Past the Prosperity Think Tank Meeting will be held on January 30th at 6:00 PM at the Business Incubator also. You are all invited to attend and participate. Now, at the last meeting, I brought up the question as to why committees funded by the city do not give reports to City Council. I understand they have been asked to do this. My question for you as Alderman is, why are you continuing to vote for their funding if they do not come and give reports? I would also like to know why the money is received by the A and P Commission, that a portion of that money automatically goes to one company. Why can't people not choose who they want to promote their event? To me, it seems like one company has given their pockets padded and we aren't given an opportunity for other businesses to grow. Since A and P doesn't come and give us a report, I can't ask them, so I'm asking y'all to find out why it's done that way. Also, in reading over this, I see here that Resolution 520 that's going to be coming up, the reappointment of Judge Keaton to the Housing Authority. As a citizen, I have a problem with this when Judge Keaton is the direct cause of us losing our 309 program and over $200,000 to the county. I want to know why it's being entertained that he be appointed to commissions when because of his decision, he obviously does not care about this county. Just my opinion, just my question. These are things I would like at some point for you as Alderman to answer. I appreciate you coming.
Can I ask a question? Yes, yes sir. It's a question that that second appointment that you had on your outline, what was that?
The Past the Prosperity?
Yeah.
That is the Business Think Tank. That's where citizens get together, we talk about what we want to do in Camden, what we want to see going forward, help our community grow.
Okay, and I think after that, you mentioned A and P and the promotion.
They automatically give a portion of whatever money you're awarded, say you're awarded $1,500. They automatically pay, I'd say $500, this is not actual figures. They automatically pay $500 to J.C. Productions to promote your event. You don't have a choice in who you want to promote your event. So say there's a young promoter out there trying to get started, they don't even have the option to do that. That money is automatically taken from that group and given to J.C. Productions.
You don't have a choice.
Exactly. And that's what I want to know, why we as citizens do not have a choice? We fund A and P, our tax dollars. We should have the choice who we want to promote our events.
If change with the mayor, I said, one, you can do an A and P Commission meeting, ask the questions.
I brought this up at the last City Council meeting.
But you said you can't ask them to not give reports, I'm saying if they have meetings, they're public.
That are during the day, so someone like me who works 40 hours a week, eight to five, cannot attend those meetings because I work in four days. I can't take my lunch break and come to an A and P meeting and go back to work. That's why them giving reports at City Council is so important, so that people like me can be informed as to why they do what they do.
There's other people that work different shifts that can't get there, but I guess I'm saying they have other meetings where questions can be asked. The contract can be reviewed, what they've done is any individual promoting an event in Camden certainly use whoever they want to sponsor the event. But if they're getting A and P funding, A and P has a contract with J.C. Productions to do basically blanket advertising, so he's buying all the spots where everything that's coming through the A and P Commission. But if they've got 10 events, they do all the blanket advertising. And A and P Commission made a decision that they found that to be better use of the taxpayers' money, may disagree with it, but that was the rationale for the decision because they were trying to spend the money individually at $500, let's say for example, to 10 different people where they spent $500 on 10 different places, the event would not be as publicized. So by giving it to one person, they get a blanket amount of time, there's regular time, TV time, print media, they find that to be a better use of the money and actually a better.
But they also only go towards one demographic and not everybody is wanting their stuff promoted in that one demographic.
The individuals that are applying for, I guess I would say for assistance, they're free to advertise their event with anybody they want. But the question is, if you're receiving A and P funds for them to advertise it, A and P has control. Here's what we think best advertising. If I may, I can't answer the exact question. If that's something that could be or should be revisited, then maybe that'd be an opportunity to have your older person or someone represent you at that meeting, give them the heart of your, of what you're saying and let them speak on your behalf, yes.
Are there not two council members on A and P Commission?
Yeah, and she can come for that A and P Commission.
Well, I would say that you're, as a representative, our appointed representative on there, you could ask those questions. Is there another?
Chip.
Chip. Chip.
Thank you.
So we only have one represent?
Come on back, yes, we only have one representative now. Is that volunteer?
No, I got a day job.
He resigned. One second, sir, just one minute. Yes, ma'am, is there anyone else who would like to volunteer? All right, yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Representative. My name is Larry Mitchell, 649 Magnolia Road. May I have two things that I want to bring before you this evening? And one of them, I need some help on. I go to church at Shadow Baptist Church, almost 247 Buckhampton Street. And when we get to the church, folks have the church blocked out for you, we can't drive up in the church. I need to know is there any way possible, because I've seen signs all around Camden to other churches, is there any way possible that we could, the city could put a sign there saying, no parking in the driveway? If parking the driveway in your car will be towed. Could we do that?
It's private.
Mr. Prior.
So he's saying, in other words, you can.
I can do it.
You can do it.
No help, please, sir.
Well, what I'm saying is we can enforce, if a law is there, but that's private property.
Okay, I understand.
If you say nobody can park there and someone, you have to have some advertisement to say that.
Yes, sir.
Then we can do the next step.
Yes, sir. And my second question.
Got a question on that, Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, sir.
Are you seeking some way to get a sign?
Yes.
And get it installed?
Yes.
Okay, and I thought that's what you was looking, looking for here.
Right.
I don't, I don't know how that works, is that a cost on that?
Can you put a sign?
If we can make a sign, would that open up a door and we'll be making signs for everybody?
Yeah, yeah.
If I may, I can remember when we had Neighborhood Watch.
Right.
We purchased signs and we asked the city in their square time, did they put the signs up? And they've done that. But we purchased the signs for the Neighborhood Watch. And the city did do us that thing, but it wasn't, they didn't give us a specific time or date. It was a workaround and, you know, it's just sticking it in the ground, but doing it right. But we purchased the signs.
And I had a part B on that question. This is actually on yours property in your driveway?
It was a church property, yes.
Okay.
And they have parking where we can't get in, in the church. And I thought, I'm just thinking out loud now, if we can't get in, that means the fire department can't get in.
Right.
The police can't come in if something happens, so we, it's a problem. And, you know, we can go ahead and get our own sign, then I just had to ask secrets and anybody possible I can get it from the city.
Okay, I, I know you, we know each other, but I'll talk with you a little bit after this, that might be able to help you out a little bit.
Yes, sir. And my second question, I came up like two or three meetings ago, I asked about Little Johnson, and I haven't heard anything, so I think you referred me to one of the gentlemen over here somewhere? Do you have a?
The county.
County. Has anything been said?
That's not us.
That's not you guys. All right, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Representative.
And before you leave tonight, Brother Mitchell, you'll give me, you'll just seem to give me a number on you, I can get that message to the judge.
Yes, sir.
Email address and phone, I can get that.
Yes, sir, will do. Thank you.
Are there any others? Any more can, all in participation tonight? All right, well that brings us to our mayor's report. So let me give an account of the 2019 National Brownfields Training Conference that we just attended there in Los Angeles, California, Fornia, December the 10th through the 13th of last year. Last month, Amy, Travis, and I attended the 2019 National Brownfields Training Conference in Los Angeles. A brownfield site is a piece of property that may have been contaminated by some sort of environmental hazard over the years. Sites like former service stations or rail yards and former mechanic shops are examples of some brownfield sites. Cleaning up and reinvesting in these properties protects the environment, it reduces blight, and it makes redevelopment easier. The Brownfields program is funded by the EPA and the city of Camden has been awarded several grants over the years to assess and clean up sites like these around the city. Brownfield grants also fund training. Some of you may know at S.A.U.Tech, they have an Environmental Academy, which is in partnership with the city of Camden. They've had a successful workforce training program at the Environmental Academy for at least 10 years, for more than 10 years. Some of the Arkansas Environmental Training Academy Environmental Health and Safety classes that are designed are for hazardous material workers, shippers, facility operator, and hazmat responders. And they are made possible by the Brownfields grants that we receive. S.A.U.Tech and the city of Camden continue to enjoy a good working relationship with EPA and the Brownfields program, and we're excited to explore and implement future projects and cleanups using Brownfields gritten. So we had a wonderful time, it was a lot of learning, a lot of classes, classes running simultaneously. We chose to go to as many as we could, and Camden was also given special recognition during some of, during one of the meetings in particular. And we are looking forward to working with Mr. Paul as he's going to, we're planning to actually go down to Addison really soon to tie up some loose ends. And the goal is not just to clean up those areas, but the goal is redevelopment. So let's say you had an old gas station here and that stuff went into earth. A person comes along to build on that, he probably can't afford it. So we media, we did everything right. And so we, we want to redevelop some of those areas. It's not just to clean it up, we need to put something else there. So we need our investors and other people to step up and let's take advantage of what's been done in our community through the EPA and that many grants and other things available. We had a good time, I'm not speaking for, I'm not just trying to speak for everybody, but I think we had a really, a really good time. And if you looked at some of the pictures, you saw us, we were hanging out, we were in class, we were learning and we were growing to bring something back home. So you made a good investment in us and we hope that you will soon see a real good return on your investment. And thank you so much for the opportunity that you afforded us to go and bring something back home. At this time.
I got a question on your comments there. The, you made a, come in about the service stations and the cleanup we did. I was a little, I was kind of looking at some of the cleanup we did down there and I heard some, some information that was put out by previous administrations about it. And I got two-part question here and I guess I'll need to get in with Mr. Prior over there. Who owns, actually owns the Brownfields down there?
When you say down there, we're actually speaking of from Progress Street almost to the liquor store, right?
Okay.
To the liquor store. That's, that's us.
The Port Authority.
The Port Authority.
Port Authority.
The Port Authority.
Owns that property.
All right, well, there you go.
Yeah. Now, when we say a port authority, it's been explained to me two different ways who the port authority is. Can I hear a legal way? Who, who is actually the port authority?
Port Authority is a commission of the city of Camden.
A commission?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Okay. Based on was we, did we, did we introduce those people, did we appoint those people?
Yes.
And may I ask, this is something I would, can I ask a timeline, when did this happen? I've only been on the board so long, maybe Ellie knows.
This goes back to when the port was built in 70, 71.
Yeah, okay.
It would be, right, it's going to be in the municipal code that allows municipalities to create a port authority. If that actually is for, if they have a harbor, where they create a port authority is what it's for.
Okay.
It's for the harbor and they have a.
So whatever.
Warmer and the city appoints, the city appoints the personnel, mayor acts as chairperson of the commission.
Okay, so whoever wants to purchase property here has to be basically setting up a contract or deal with the port authority?
That'd be correct.
Now, is there a criteria in order to purchase that property? Have they set out a criteria for residents or whoever want to purchase?
Not a criteria. I mean, it would be, it's going to just be like, see, like it can't be sold without it being, going through a process. And I don't know that we've had any criteria set other than what's already in the codes. They can't give it away, it's got to be done through a bidding process, got to get a fair market value for it, things like that.
Because over the years, I haven't seen any other for auction or for sale or?
I don't think.
So we're just kind of sitting on it?
As far as I know.
Okay.
But that would be up to the commission. There was some that was traded in order to get the rails, the trails program. That was actually through the port authority. And U Pacific wanted some extra land that the port authority had, and that was traded to get the rails to trails program, to get the trace essentially.
So other than that, the commission controls the sale or auction of any of the property based on those people on that commission?
Yes.
So the city has no say-so about it?
Well, the city has say-so in appointing the people that are on there.
Right.
Right.
But right now, the commission controls that property.
That'd be correct.
Are you satisfied, Mr. Allen Moore?
No, I'll be digging some more.
As long as we done all we can.
Right, right, we, we good for now.
So now we have, my whole business, we have none after New Year. And for new business, Resolution 110, 120, I thought that.
Introduce by the mayor.
Introduced by the mayor.
Introduce by the mayor.
Resolution 120, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Camden, Arkansas, recognizing meetings and procedures as set forth in the Code of Ordinances of the City of Camden and adopting other procedural rules.
Motion to approve.
That's a move.
Moved and. Second. So moved and second, I'm ready for discussion. Those in favor use the voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, please say nay. Then I have Resolution Number 220, which is introduced by the mayor.
Resolution 220, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Camden, Arkansas, awarding the bid for the purchase of 22020 police package SUV vehicles for the Camden Police Department.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
It's removed and.
Second.
Probably second, we're ready for discussion.
Yes.
Yes.
I just have a question. Chief's here, right?
Yes, sir.
Is that going to be standard protocol now, we go into SUVs?
Yes, sir, or quick making cars.
Okay.
Take quick production of all cars.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Those in favor use the voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. You're welcome, sir. Then we're ready for Resolution Number 320, introduced by the mayor.
Resolution 320, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Camden, Arkansas, awarding the bid for the purchase of a pumper truck and training for the Camden Fire Department.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
It's removed and.
Question.
Did you say second the question?
No question.
We got the first, we gotta wait for the second.
We gotta get the second.
It's removed and second, we're ready for discussion.
I was trying to think, did now, which one of these did we, we had a new one on our desk when we got here.
Yes, because there's one thing that changed. I did it and I messed it up. Instead of awarding bids, when it was purchased through the state, so we didn't have to do bids, it's just authorizing the purchase.
Okay.
And so all that's changed is instead of awarding bids, it says authorizing.
I just wanted to see what.
Yes, that's the only change that's on there. I got a little key happy.
All right. Is there more discussion?
Just one. Chief, is this going to be utilized strictly as our force here or is it going to be a part of the training academy or?
It's going to be what now?
Part of the training academy as far as training here.
No, no, so what that is in training, in the contract, it includes in there that there's going to be three days of training, which will cover each shift, basically as an orientation to the new program.
Okay, strictly yours.
It's no cost, but it will be just my guys at the fire department.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Those in favor use the voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use the voting sign of nay. Nays happy. We're now ready for Resolution Number 420, which is also introduced by the mayor.
Resolution 420, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Camden, Arkansas, authorizing the mayor to enter into a membership contract for emergency medical helicopter evacuation for city employees.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
It's removed and probably second, I'm ready for discussion. I got one question. Yes, sir. When we discussed this before, we was talking about doing this for city employees and the elected officials paying for it themselves. It's paying for everything or, that was discussed at one point.
That's the way it was discussed.
Yeah. So is this paying for employees and elected officials or are we still?
Section 2 serves employee.
And elected, yeah. But I know what we talked about when we discussed it first, that elected officials would pay the $50 for themselves.
Well, I was going to say, we did discuss if it was settled. I plan on having to deduct it out of my check, because I don't think I will be getting anything extra out of it. I'd say it's, the system is designed to cover everybody.
Yeah.
But it's up to your own, you know, take the extra or. I wouldn't vote for it to give it to myself, but I don't want to deny anyone else.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask Mr. Green to come up a minute? I think he was kind of the expert on this, I might. And that was one of my concerns, because I remember discussing it and Ellie brought it up at the table. So I guess I'm asking now, how are we going to do it?
This resolution, section 2, says the annual membership expense is in each department's health and life insurance budget line, item 51420, at $50 per year per employee and elected official.
Okay. So would I be out of line to ask for an amendment on this? I'm asking my colleagues here. And take that out for the elected officials?
I would appreciate being included in it.
Okay.
Do they have the option of paying if they choose to pay themselves? They can write a check to some.
It complicates the issue quite a bit, so it's better, you're either in or out, the city pays or doesn't pay. So it's whatever, whatever you want to do.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, Mr. Green, but you know, when I got my itinerary this week and I was looking at all of this and, you know, it's a lot of money trying to go out here and we don't, we don't really know what's going to come in this year. And I'm just concerned about, I'm, I'm here to do my job as an elected official and, and I'm willing to take my, carry my weight because we're supposed to be taking care of the employees.
Right, we do, the city does provide benefits to the council through the municipal way.
Sure.
So you do have some coverage in that aspect of it. And so the thought process with this was it's blanket, the more we get into the plan, the cheaper it is.
Cost.
So it, it was, I would hate to say easier, but a blanket program was best to put in place. We can always have exceptions to it, you can always make amendments to it.
Let me ask this, and I don't want to complicate, you've got as complicated a job as we've got here anyway. But let's just say that, that if Marvin and I said, okay, we're not, we don't want to be taking anything else from the city, it's going to cost $50 a year, you can just hold $50 out of our pay. Is that, would that be a complication? Or us excluding ourselves from coverage would be a complication? It looks like you amended, a paycheck wouldn't bother you.
Wouldn't bother. Yeah. So that's one of the complications.
But that's going to make, I know that was going to make paperwork for him.
That's one of the complications there. It's, like I say, it's easier that you either voted in or you voted out. And at that point in time, if you voted out for the elected officials, we won't add you to the list. So you will be excluded. But I really tell you. But I really tell you, this is an awfully good plan for y'all not to have it for fifty bucks. I think you're shorting yourselves, you do a service for the city, you put your time and effort into it. This really does, will protect you.
I like the plan. It's not the problem of the plan.
As a taxpayer, speaker as, uh-
Y'all to be covered.
Alderman, uh, Arden.
Thank you, sir.
We are all free to make a contribution to the city at any time, correct? You can do that, I think it would care.
Yes, sir. For me, Ellie, I see exactly what you're saying. And Mr. Green, I'm, I'm like you. Either you're going to do it or you, or you're not, and it's simple and, and we, we need to just be real here. I mean, as elected officials, we don't want to take anything from the city or the employees or whatever, but if we look at, just look at the panel up here, you're looking at four hundred bucks. And I'm like Mr. Green. Yeah. I mean, it's four hundred bucks. Marvin, you're worth it. You know? I'm, I'm just saying. Man, I'm worth it.
Yes, sir.
And, and, and if we want to make a contribution, like you said, Chris, we can-
You are free to do that.
Go, whatever, but I think we can. Is there any more discussion on resolution four-twenty? So we're ready for, for us, those in favor, use the vote sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, use the vote sign of nay. Again, the ayes have it tonight. Resolution five-twenty, introduced by the mayor, it's a real point. Int- uh, introduced by the mayor.
Resolution five-twenty, a resolution of the city council of the City of Camden, Arkansas, confirming the reappointment of Edwin Keaton to the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners.
Motion to approve.
As I move.
The move and, proper, second. Ready for discussion? Discussion?
Yes.
Um, I know this might be a dead horse, but I'd like, uh, for the audience participation to, um, say it earlier, and I've said it down through the years. A lot of these people that we're going to be voting on tonight, I know them. They're good people, I know their families and everything, but these commissions do not come and give a report. And all we do is voting on a commission and everything, but I would like to see, once again, this is part of the discussion, they'll come and give a report at least once a year.
Twice would be good. I'm agreeing, twice would be better, but yeah.
Just tell them.
I tell you, I'm set, vote no on all of them until they come here and start showing up.
And the only input I had on that, oh, I heard the young lady when she came up, is that, uh, they don't chair those commissions. You know? I give a report here, I don't, I don't have to, but I do because I use some of the city's facilities. And I think I'm obligated to do it. But I don't think we go after the commissioners, we have to address the people that chair that commission because they are in charge of that commission. If I have a problem with the police force, I wouldn't address Mr. Woody, Captain, Captain Woody, Chief Woody. I'm just saying, on my part, because those people are a, they are appointed by that group that's there. So I think that we could send a letter or ask, Mr. Fry to send a letter to that commission and ask them to report here once a year. But if we attack just each individual, I don't think it's right.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying that if, if we don't have those things, we don't know what they-
I understand and I'm in agreement.
Even take the time, they invoke their own people in.
This is the only authority we have hotel. So that's the only authority we have.
Well, I just, I, I would put, uh, the Housing Authority Commission is in a little bit different category.
Right.
So almost everything else, the port authority, the airport commission, uh, A P commission, all of those are creations of the city camp. It can be dissolved and all the powers fall back to the city camp for all those things. The Housing Authority Commission is different because it is made up of different, different entities. So I would kind of put the, the-
They're, they're not part of our budget.
Correct, so I mean, it i- it isn't separate, doesn't mean they still should come, and I would just say, as far as asking, asking for reports or even just evaluating them, I would just say the housing commission is a different, uh, animal than all the rest.
Oh, yes.
All the rest of them are just city creations that can be dissolved, uh, they fully follow the needs of the-
And Mr. Fry, why don't we even, uh, vote on it then? I guess cause-
This is for Malachi.
That, how, or they send the city or?
Well, to try and give a voice to all the stakeholders in the town. So it's supposed to be, you got someone from county, you got someone from the city, but when you do that, that's bringing in a lot of different, uh, uh, people from different places. Uh, but, but, and so I'm not saying that's good or bad, I'm just saying the housing authority is a different type of commission than, than the airport commission and the A P commission and the civil services commission, all of which are just off city. Uh, and I, 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 I do remember the council, I know the airport commission has come both of the last two years, the airport commission has. Uh, and they have indicated they're willing to come again whenever it's convenient with the council. They're willing to be here as soon as they get advised. I don't allow the rest of the commissions, but the airport commission, I know specifically, has been in the last two years.
And, and Mr. Fry, my own personal dealings with them, I've been to them, certain issues, I have constituents in there that live in the housing authority, and they came to me about things and I went to them and I was told that that's federal property. Am I right? They have no jurisdiction over there. I'm just telling you the information I got.
So I, I think the frustration that some may be expressing is that when you don't attend the meetings and you don't read the minutes, you're at a disadvantage. So, uh, these commissions, uh, or the boards that we're speaking of, if you miss in the meetings, try to read the minutes that are happening at those meetings. We can ask for those, I'm sure.
Sure.
And if you want to, you can go on explorecamden.com and look at actually the minutes of each of the meetings from, uh, board of adjustments and some of those boards are available to you. Again, that's explorecamden.com and you go under, um, I know where it is. Can you tell me where this got, do you know?
Government.
It's, yeah, go on the government and you'll see where, you can go and read some of those minutes. And we've been wanting all of those minutes to be available to us from the different commissions. Uh, and we're asking all of them to run their meetings properly. Last year, I was cited because people were just saying, y'all, anybody disagree? They didn't carry a motion, didn't do things legally. And so I had to bear the brunt and the weight of that mistake. And I'd like for us to run the meeting properly. And I'd like for concerned citizens to go and visit those meetings, those are open meetings. Uh, you need to go to those meetings about things that you're concerned about and, and listen. And many of them do allow an opportunity for the audience to participate, just like this meeting on tonight. And if you have concerns, it's always better to do it that way, uh, uh, first. Uh, and then if things don't work out, you can always, you know, come and tell, tell on them. But first things first, I would go to those meetings and if you will look, we started doing a newsletter from here and the December one lists all of the meetings that we know of in the city. We call all the boards and all the commissions that we have a list for. Like, some of them do not have updated list. And the reason some people keep repeating the same people is because they say nobody's coming and nobody will, will take that person's place. So they keep reappointing the same person over and over and over again because they say nobody knows. So if you, if you have the opportunity, please care enough to go to the meetings. And if you will go to the meetings and they see you coming, when it comes time for someone's turn to run out, instead of reinstating them, they can consider you for some of those, uh, positions, uh, on those boards. They need some fresh blood, uh, from time to time. So if you would, I would appreciate that. Um, is there any more discussion on resolution number five-twenty? I got one more question. And I just want to be clear, Max and Mr. Fry, so for us voting on these, uh, people, uh, to be on these boards, is it for malady or is written in stone a covenant that the city got to do to vote, to vote a meeting?
The council does not have to approve somebody. But, but, but if someone is not approved by the council, that person will not sit. So, so there is nothing that requires council to approve somebody that is either recommended by any commission or submitted.
I, I, I see what you're saying.
But, but, but if the council does not approve, then right, they will not have that member on, on any of the exact committees.
Correct.
But there's nothing that says that the city has to, uh, submit anybody. I mean, it doesn't really, that's just a duty of the, a duty of the city council. On, on most of them, they submit the recommended person. But as I said, I would put the housing authority in a separate category.
Yes, sir.
Just because of the way, way it operates. But, but yes, they submit a name and they say, here's the person that we have.
Here's our obligation to.
It's our obligation to, to use the name that's submitted. The council can choose a different person, the council can say, we're not going to submit anybody. If you don't submit anybody, that just leaves a vacancy on the board. So a person cannot sit on any of these boards if they have not been appointed. So I, I would say it's more than a, a formality because if someone's not appointed, they, they can't just say, well, city council didn't vote on us, but we're just going to kind of keep meeting and just go ahead and show up, Bill, and we'll just show up and all vote, because no, that person's not a member, the city of Cam- Camden did not, uh, approve and nominate that person to serve.
I, I was just trying to see if we were wasting time at pay.
We do a lot of that.
And, and, and I kind of go with the question from Ms. Williams. Is that the way the commissions are set up, as I said, these are subsidiaries of the City of Camden, that they can be dissolved. The purpose of them is to save time in paper. I mean, the purpose of it is that each of these entities is able to deal with some issues that then as they're dealing with them every month, the city council doesn't have to deal with all that. But, but the city council wanted to say, we don't want a port authority, we don't want an airport commission, we don't want a- The city council can administer all the programs, but I mean, so the purpose of having these, these boards and commissions is to delegate authority down and let local people, let local entities handle it with your approval and, and sort of oversight that you're appointing the people over that. Uh, but since they're city, city entities, the city council, if you don't have the commissions, it falls on back on the city council.
But the flip side of that is that those entities will report back to-
Yes.
Yes, correct. That's right.
And I think the problem is not having them to do-
Correct.
The issue is the lack of communication coming back of the decisions that have been made. If I may recognize, uh, Mr. David Richards.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment that on my appointment or the water insurance commission's appointment to its board, uh, there's a city ordinance that states that the water insurance commission will appoint an individual and that individual then come before the city council for approval. So that's the law that says that we follow. Uh, the other appointment that we have coming up later on this afternoon, uh, and I made mention, you know, that the commission should come before the board. And I do come before the board representing the water insurance commission. My report to you is approved by the water insurance commission before I even present it to you. So, uh, that representation is here.
Why would you do this? He don't care what you do to the rest of them, save me. Yeah, sure. All right, is there any more discussion pertaining to resolution number five-twenty? If not, we're ready for a, for us, those in favor, use the vote sign of aye.
All right.
Opposed, use the sign of nay.
Nay.
All right, ayes have it. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Resolution six-twenty now is introduced by the mayor.
Resolution six-twenty, a resolution of the city council of the City of Camden, Arkansas, confirming the appointment of Roderick Cooper to the Airport Board of Commissioners.
Your motion to approve.
So moved.
It's been moved and-
Second.
Well, I'm the second, then, are we ready for a discussion?
Yep.
Yes.
I've got, I guess, two or three, uh, things in it, I guess it deals with the, the, this one and the one right after. Deal with the same thing on the airport commission. I was wondering what the procedure was.